Okay, we're now recording, so this is Mayor Anita Enander, and I'm going to call to order this meeting of the Open Government Committee at 4:31 on Friday, April 29th. Make sure I get that right. Present are Councilmember Lynette Lee Ying and I as the members of the committee. And we have a couple of members of, we have a member of the public and another council member attending as well. The purpose of this meeting, and this follows the process that I have seen operate for at least the last five years, is that the committee meets prior to the required meeting in the policy, which is the first May meeting of each year, and discusses what, whether there are any matters that should come to the council. And then at the first meeting of the council, although occasionally it's been, I noticed in going back over the history, it's sometimes it's been the second meeting of May, the council either has directed further work or has accepted recommendations from the committee. Kind of depends what the subject has been in different years. It's followed a slightly different path depending on what was being recommended and what council wanted to do. Overall, the purpose of this meeting is reflected in the actual policy, which is to assess the cost and impact on staff and to determine if there should be changes or expansions or any general changes, additions to the policy. What I recall from the first time that I participated in this hearing from Mayor Pepper, who, then Mayor Pepper, who was involved with the, I think she was vice mayor at the time, in putting this together originally in a prior council, is that there was a desire of the council to go above and beyond the Brown Act in terms of transparency and noticing to the public on various things. And that they wanted to do it in a way that they could also capture the impact on staff. So what, assessing what was the additional cost burden and staff burden of going above and beyond. And so what was required in the annual review was to look specifically at that. To the best of my knowledge, a lot of attention hasn't been paid to that. And so it's one of the things we might, I'm going to suggest that we talk about today. Going through, and what I suggest we do, Lynette, I'm going to go to the public and then we'll come back and talk, is kind of go section by section and look at what we think the situation with is. This is, I'll also note that in prior years, it's been council direction that this committee take up the commission handbook and council norms on occasion. And for example, last year, we went through, and we did this then by agreement of the whole council, went through the whole council norms and procedures and made changes. So with that as the kind of general definition of the scope of what this committee is supposed to do, I want to go over to the attendees and ask if anyone wants to make any comments on the agenda item. And then Lynette and I will discuss and conclude what we want to report out to city council at the May 10th meeting. So if you are interested in making any comments, would you please raise your virtual hand? And I'll call on you. So let's start with May Rus. And go ahead, I think you can unmute yourself or do I need to make, allow you to talk? Maybe I need to allow you to talk. And go ahead.
Hi. Hi, this is Marissa Ahay. I'm a planning commissioner, but speaking as a resident. I think the public noticing section of this policy, specifically regarding story polls, should be taken out. I think it's time for us to move on from what I think is an outdated policy and to stop adding financial hardships to developers. As you know, we are fully approving projects up to 65 feet high now. Eight high-density projects have been approved in just the last five years. So if we're using them as a way to imagine height, then that's already been done. We don't really need them for that anymore. And if we're using them as a warning sign, then the city already does a great job of alerting residents about upcoming projects with our website and with live streaming our meetings. So again, we don't need them for that anymore either. There's just no logical reason anymore to have them. If this committee chooses to continue it in the exact same way, I think the city council is just going to be subjected to more exemption requests, more meetings, more delays, even maybe more lawsuits until the state ultimately might just remove it for us. So that's all I had. Thanks.
Thank you very much. I don't see other hands. Let me just verify the other members. I don't see anything, anyone.
How does, Mayor, I have a quick question. So when, I know in the Parks Commission, when people call in, how do they raise their hand? When they call in on a phone, they can, they can raise their hands as well? If anybody has called in.
I'm not, I'm not sure what your, what your question is. This is, this is what usually happens during commission meetings is people come in as attendees, it's just like with council, I think.
Well, because I know Parks Commission, if you call in, you cannot raise your, you have problems raising your hand to speak. But I know in council, people can call in. So I just wanted to make sure it would be.
So is your, is your question about how people can participate by phone and whether that is unduly limited in our current?
Correct.
Our current situation?
On the Parks Commission, when you call in, somehow you're not able to comment. But if you attend as a, on computer, you are able to participate.
Okay, I think that we can raise that question with the folks who understand this technology. I'm, I'm not capable of asking, of answering that. But I think the question is whether going forward with our electronic environment, participation, public participation is kind of equally available in, via different devices? I have a suspicion that part of the problem is the, the, either the device or the application that the person has or doesn't have on their, on their phone, but I don't know that for a fact. So I'm going to make.
Asking that because when you ask for any other public comment, sometimes if someone's on the phone, they can't respond. So I was just inquiring about that.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I mean, I don't know what to do if, if they don't show up as attendees. I don't have, don't have any other way to access people.
Because on the Parks Commission, they show up. People will show up.
Right, the phone number will show up usually.
Yeah, correct.
Yeah, but we don't, like, we don't have any phone numbers.
But everybody's, everybody seems to be have participating.
Yeah, I want to be sure we're not, we're not ignoring anybody. So.
But we can move on.
Okay. So it seems to me that sections two and three of the policy, do you want me to try and put?
Yeah, screen share, so we can follow along. That would be great.
So I can do all of this at the same time? I'm not sure. Hang on a second. About 20 bazillion things open on my laptop there. Let me, let me try, let me hope that I can do this. Okay, can you see the, this is the open government page from the city website? Can you still see it?
Yes, I see it.
Okay, because I've also opened a separate window that I need for taking notes and can be a little bit tricky. Come back. Oh, now this is what drives me crazy. Everything is shrunk and I can't, now I can't go back to my main screen. See, I went, I went elsewhere and now and now I can't get back to my screen sharing.
Okay, then that's okay if you want to close, if it's easier for you to, so you can take notes.
Let me, if, if you can see it, it would be easier if I'm not trying to share screen. I cannot do.
Yeah, I have the, the one that's, I have my document open. I have my document open.
Okay, so section one is just, you know, I don't know that there's anything specifically to say in there. That's just in, like a preamble thing. But in section two on posting of agendas, I'm pretty sure there have been some changes that some of them are because of COVID and some of them are other state law changes about how you do posting and electronic posting. And so I think we need Jolie to take a look at this section to see. You know, this is the standard problem where the state law makes some policy or ordinance or municipal code or whatever obsolete. And we needed to at least look at this and see what needs to be changed, if anything, under state law.
I think regarding posting of agendas, it's not a matter of discussion. I think how we're doing it is sufficient. And I don't think that's a question. So I don't think we need to have further discussion about that.
Yeah, it's just that I want Jolie to make sure that the, like the sentence at the end of the first paragraph that says the agenda shall also be made available for public inspection and copying at both public libraries and city hall during normal business hours. You know, like when city hall was closed, we wouldn't have let people to come in and copy the agenda. So I just don't know whether there's something that ought to be changed there because of the state law. And that's what I would ask her about. And then the other thing is that the way this is reads and the way, as you know, the way we used to do business a few years ago, says the final agenda shall contain a meaningful description of each item of business to be transacted or discussed at the meeting and all related items, including staff reports, proposals, and contracts that will be considered for action. And you know that sometimes we get reports, we do reports late. And you also know that we have where we put up letters that have been received from the public. And I know that a prior version of this several years ago, the original version, the very first version of this, because I looked at all of them, had criteria for public communication in meetings. And that was taken out based on the legal office saying, nah, you don't want to put that in there. So I'm not sure that there needs to be anything said about the public correspondence. But I wonder if we have any issues with what our practice has been, where we don't always have reports up eight days ahead. And I think we ought to ask Jolie about that vis a vis what's in this, this document.
Okay.
But otherwise, I don't, I can't think of anything in section two.
Okay, section three.
Section three is the, is the one, you know, we changed this, the last time we changed this document was in 2019. And this is where we made changes. This is where we added, like in the second paragraph, we added, in addition to notices for multiple family, we had added notices for public and community facilities, office and administrative to the, you know, commercial and mixed use. So basically, the first paragraph was about single family and the second paragraph covered everything else. And we made sure that it included public and community facilities and office and administrative. And this is also when we changed it from 500 to 1,000 feet and added a requirement to add notice to the media. And that we would mail notices for the pre-application, study sign, study session design review if held, as well as the first public hearing of the planning commission and first public hearing of the city council. I don't know with the way we're going to be doing things under the Housing Accountability Act and SB 330, if this really, you know, still works and is still legal. So I think we got to check that with, with Jolie. And then I think with respect to the, that's on the second paragraph, I'm sorry, I'm going out of order. With respect to the first paragraph, you know, we, I think we've had a lot of requests from people about, since design review, since there's not going to be design review in a lot of cases now because of new state law, whether we can have notices routinely posted if the city does them. I'm not sure we can require the applicant to do it, but whether the city can post a notice for any substantive change in a residential, for a residential project. So in the old days, design review would have covered sec, two stories. Help me make sure I've got this right. Would have covered two stories and I believe would have covered anything where it was more than a 50% change or whether there was a second, or if there was a second story addition. Those were the things that went to design review. So since that's not going to go to design review anymore, I think we have to figure out what's the replacement here.
Since it's not going to design review, it's still our policy, though we can make policy that, that they, that the thousand-foot public noticing still be in place.
Well, there's no, there's no thousand, there's no thousand-foot noticing for single family. That's only for multifamily and public and community. And I'm sorry, I jumped around because I talked about first paragraph, second paragraph, then I went back to the first paragraph. I'm sorry about the confusion. But if I go back to the first, the first paragraph, which is about single family, then there is no thousand-foot notice. Never has been.
But in our second paragraph, we can change the policy about public noticing. So, okay, let's just look at it this way. Did you? On the first paragraph, notices for single-family residents shall be provided in accordance with Los Altos Municipal Code. So then we should bring up the Los Altos Municipal Code 14.76.
Yeah, well, it gives the requirements for stuff under design review, but stuff's not going to go to design review anymore. So the problem is, do we still want to do notice for those kinds of projects? And if so, what kind of noticing and what can we legally do? And that's the question, I think, for Jolie.
And we have to, would have to make a recommendation.
Yeah, we would have to make a recommendation to council for what to do instead.
To amend 14.7803.
Yep.
Yeah. So I think when we make that recommendation to amend 14.78030, we can discuss how we're going to do public noticing and we can also discuss story polls.
But we don't go there, don't go, don't go farther than that paragraph yet, please.
Okay.
Do one paragraph at a time, so I don't get lost on my notes.
We can discuss how public noticing and whether we want to expand public noticing to include applications for ADUs as well as SB 9 applications.
Yeah. Yeah, that's true. Okay, hang on a sec while I make notes. Okay, then in the second, I got it. In the second paragraph, which are the notices for, there's, there's two things. One is the notices for all the other, you know, multifamily, commercial, blah, blah, blah. And again, that's something I think we need to check with Jolie about whether, whether this is worded correctly to, given what we've got now with respect to public hearings and how all that works. That's one question. And then the second one is what to do about story polls. And I think a part of that too is whether, whether any change to story polls should be done here or whether it should be done as a part of the, the housing element. Because if it's considered a constraint and we then change it, you know, that's, that's one way to approach it. And I don't know.
Well, we would have to have further discussion and not just say we're going to eliminate story polls because with the story polls for single-family homes as well, many people find it beneficial and advantageous in learn, being informed about what's happening in these developments in their neighborhoods. So you can't broadly say, state that we just want to eliminate story polls. Well, we'll have, we should have a broader discussion. And then, like you said, that broader discussion then should be incorporated in our housing element.
There, um, so here's a question because it's unclear to me. I don't think this policy calls for story polls in, well, it's, here's the sentence that's confusing to me, okay? Is the sentence that begins multiple story, multiple family. There's no, in, in, it's in the middle of the project, of this paragraph. Let's see. There's no comma. So I, I think we require them for two-story homes, right?
Yes.
But see, it does, there's a comma missing. So it says multiple story, multiple family. And I think it means multiple story, residential, comma, multiple family, comma. I think there's a comma missing. That's why it's confusing.
Yeah.
You see, well, I, this made me crazy when I was trying to sort it out.
Multiple story, comma, multifamily.
I think multiple story residential is what's, is what that means is intended to be. So multi-story, single family is what's, is the beginning instance in that sentence.
Yeah.
Right? Are you, you agree that's what it's supposed to mean, even though it's a little confusing?
Yeah, because then otherwise it's written wrong and we haven't addressed, it doesn't capture everything that we have, it covers.
Because we're doing it. If you're going to, right now, or at least in the past, if you were going to build a two-story house, you had to do story polls, as I recall.
Correct.
Hang on while I make a note. Okay. Okay, so, so this is another one to run past Jolie. And then also to discuss with, obviously with council on, on what direction they want to go. Then in, are we done with, you agree we're done with number three?
Well, do we want to make a recommendation? Or do you want to just not make a recommendation now and just have it for discussion?
I, I think we might as well just have a discussion.
Okay.
And, and let everybody give their own opinion. And then, you know, we can, it'd be our job to work up the kind of the sense of the council into a, into a document to come back for, for action.
Okay.
And it's, and it is going to partly depend on what Jolie says we can do and we can't do anymore.
Okay.
Sections four, five, and six are.
I think what the council would be looking for is, because like, I strongly don't think that it should just be elimination of story polls in general, you know? So I think we need to be careful. And that's the explaining why we're bringing it back.
Yes. But there's been, certainly there, you know, the whole council's been exposed to a number of public comments about story polls, pro and con from, from, you know, a number of people. So it's not like they're coming to this cold and don't have some notion from, from the public and from developers and, and so on.
Okay.
Because clearly, we've had developers who've claimed they can't do it, who actually can. Clearly, we've had situations where the story poll, actual policy, which allows for exceptions, where we've granted exceptions. And we've had situations where, when you put the polls up, people can actually see that what they were being represented by the developer turns out not to be true. And, you know, and I'm sympathetic to people who have said, and we've heard this in public, you know, you know, architects know what this is going to be like, but the average person doesn't without some sort of representation. But I think until we have a real discussion, we've not had a real substantive discussion by council on this. And I don't think that it would, other than us bringing up what we, you know, what we've heard, a summary of what we've heard, I don't know that it helps to try and frame up a policy without having a council discussion first.
Okay, that sounds fair.
Sections four, five, and six, I think, are things we need to ask John Maginot about. Because those are all, you know, that's all public city clerk stuff. Like the index of city records, is this still appropriate? Is this still proper? And also, is this still what's, you know, legal and, and what? And I think what we should be doing when we bring this to council too is saying, where does what's in this policy exceed what's required by the Brown Act? Since that, you know, the whole purpose of this thing was to do more than what was legally required. We should be pointing out what we're doing here. That's more than legally required.
Okay.
And that certainly applies to five. And to six. And then, and then what does it cost? Because I think. I, I don't know what kind of indexing is required under state law. So I don't know what the additional, I can't even guess at what the additional burden would be in section five and section six. You know, what's the additional burden on staff are doing that? I don't know. I have no clue. Do you have any clue?
No.
I mean, we have to respond to public records act requests, but maintaining the record of that and a quarterly update and all that. I, I don't know if that's required or not. I'm guessing it's not required because otherwise why would they have put it in here?
Then we'll just get more information and clarification from.
Yeah.
When we bring our open government things back, we'll have further clarification from staff.
Yeah. And then in, in number seven, to me, the, the real. Interesting question here is. Why this, why we still have this as a pilot program? And I did go back and reread all of the resolutions. To make sure that nowhere along the line had the council changed it from a pilot to an actual ordinance. And that's where I ran into, you know, notes that. It's more complicated to change it if it's an ordinance, especially with council wanting an, an annual review. But that being the case, I'm not sure if we keep calling it a pilot. So I think that's something we have to ask Julie about. You know, like, I, I know that we've had that pilot. Traffic thing, you know, behind the school for. 10 years or more, but this has been, I think this was put together first in 2015. So we're at seven years. How long do you run a pilot? And is that okay? Do you remember anything Lynette from the years when you were on council before I was?
It was just that. It wasn't even. Discuss about it being a pilot or not, but we just. Went to. Went to adhering to having a goal for review and coming back to council. And bringing back any changes needed. I mean, because even the times you were on with.
With Jan.
There was no. Need for any changes in section seven, or I mean, section eight.
Yeah, because when I went back and looked at, you know, what had changed from year to year and, and what had happened each year. The. In, you know, just from the years I had been on in 2019. We had some changes to both. This policy and to the norms and procedures and commission handbook, because council said we want open government to deal with all of that. And then in 2020, we met. And we went to council and we said, we have no recommended changes and they agreed and we did no record, we did no changes in 2020. And then last year, you know, we, we did all the whole norms and procedures thing. But no changes to this. And I'm, I'm pretty sure we're going to end up with changes to this, this year, just if nothing else, because of the, the state law changes.
And then I think when we have that discussion on this policy coming forward, we can further discuss. With the council, whether or not they want to officially make it an ordinance or not.
Yeah, I think we have to ask that question.
Okay.
But I think at preparatory to that, we asked Jolie, what's the effect of that?
Okay.
Right?
So she can be prepared in providing the, the response.
Yeah. Hang on, let me make a note. Okay. And then, you know, annual review, obviously, if anybody on council thinks we should change that based on what we're doing. To me, one of the questions is that at least twice council has directed the open government committee. To look at norms and procedures. And yet that's not really. A part of this policy. So I think that should be clarified.
Okay.
Norms and procedures and the commission handbook.
Okay.
Because it's, it's really not part of the, the charter as this thing is stated. And yet twice council has said, you know, no, we want you to go do this. And it's like, okay. So I think we have to ask that question. That's another. That's a policy question for council as well as a procedural question for Jolie. Okay. Is there anything? I'm sorry, go ahead.
We have a member of the public that joined late that would like to make a comment. Are you open to accepting the comment?
Yeah, I mean, the city attorneys basically told me we have to accept comments even when we get and out of sequence. So. But let me just say, is there, is there anything else before we do that? Is there anything else that you can think of that we ought to add in here?
I think that there's one more thing I would change or add about. How development signage, we have to have some consistency in signage, I think. Our experience from the last development, one of the developments that recently came forward. We normally have the billboards on. On, on solid. Boarding and.
Yeah, they're a part of plywood, basically.
And I think the changes. That came about, took me by surprise and it wasn't. I guess I thought it was all covered. And when I look back, we didn't have it covered. So I'd like to address that and make sure it's made clear.
Yeah, that may be something that needs to go in the, the muni ordinance. And if so, for that, but yeah, it's a, it's an, it's a problem that we have to look at because. Having something show up as a, as a plastic banner was unique.
Yeah, and it was not something I expected in it. So it, it highlighted what changes we need to make there too.
Yeah, something, yep, yep. Good point. Okay. Because I think.
One more thing.
Yeah.
I don't, if, I would like to make sure that as we do some sort of public notification, it's a consistent public notification. We do a good job for one commission and not necessarily another. Yet when we have something that's going to affect the neighborhood, it should be consistent as to how we do. Public noticing, whether it's utilization of the A-frame signage. In a neighborhood. So, and we don't. We used to have public notification as far as not only for development, but for the public of. 500 feet, like if we had a notification of what's going to occur at a park or, or. Or anything we do, just like when we were. Going to implement the, the, the dog park. You know, we want to ensure that our public is notified.
Yeah, there's, you're right. There's, there's not uniformity of things like, or like when we were working through the. Complete Streets master plan changes and they were looking at. The possible changes on some of the streets and they used A-frames. Along the, some of the streets to send, notify people to come to meetings and so on. So I think you're right, there's, we need to look at the, the uniformity of how we do noticing for. In, in neighborhoods for things that are going to directly affect the neighborhood.
Okay, those are my suggestions.
Okay. Yay, Mr. Garibaldi, thank you for your patience. I'm gonna. Give you the. Yes, we've got you. Please go ahead.
Well, let me get, I'm babysitting my grandchildren right now. Just one second here. I have to get back to a place of privacy.
This is a pretty informal meeting. I don't think we're too worried about your background noise.
No, but well, there's, there's going to be volume. Okay, I'm in my daughter-in-law, my son-in-law's master bedroom right now. So. I, I just want to say, I, I know this, your subcommittee meeting was. Involving at least at some, to some extent transparency issue. There's a lot, there was a lack of transparency, a definite lack of transparency. Which I believe is codified in the Los Altos ordinance code. When it comes to notifying Los Altos residents. About construction projects, and I'm talking about residential construction projects. In the neighborhood. And specifically on my block and labor court. You probably are aware, I know Ms. Eng is aware of this, and I, I suspect you are as well of the controversy that happened at nineteen eighty-five labor court and continues. To happen. Are my neighbors are now lawyered up. And the owners of the subject property have their own lawyer. Everybody's contemplating litigation but wants to avoid it. The neighbors on the block blame not only the residents of nineteen eighty-five, but they blame the city of Los Altos. And they're very much, as I am discouraged with. Not just how the city has treated us, but also some things. In the ordinance, I believe they're in the ordinance. That we've been trying to change for residents in the future. We know it's too late for us. We're embroiled in possible litigation. But we don't want anyone else in Los Altos to go what we've been going through. And there's maybe 12 or 13 families affected by what the Los Alt, by what Los Altos didn't do. So what, what happened was. And Ms. Eng is aware of this, but just to get you up to speed, Ms. Anander, I hope I'm pronouncing that right. The. The residents of nineteen eighty-five. On their own decided they were going to tear down their single-story house. Which was built in the nineteen fifties, as were all the houses on this block. And without telling anybody. They tore it down sometime last year. We didn't even know that they were going to tear it down. What we found out after the fact was. That they had gotten city approval even before the teardown for. Another single story, in our opinion, non-conforming, totally non-conforming house. Totally non-conforming to every house on the block, if not the, if not the neighborhood. If not the whole city of Los Altos. This house not only is ugly and looks like a trailer home. It has a disconnected ADU. Which we think is going to be connected eventually. But that's another story for another day. The. The ADU was placed on a perimeter foundation that was built, a very high foundation. It was placed in there by cranes. Two modular units went into the ADU, which sits to the right of the main house. Four modular units are dropped, were dropped for the main house, the. The total square footage is thirty-two hundred square feet, of which probably about eight hundred or nine hundred belongs to the ADU. Now. I have done plenty of research with ADU law. But I'm not sure we're here to talk about ADU law and how that preempts a lot of the city. City's decision-making, which I know it does. What I'm here to talk about is the complete non-transparency to the neighbors of this project. We firmly believe that the residents of nineteen eighty-five labor court. Did not want to notify any of us about the project. We know that they misrepresented. The building application to the bill, the, the planning department of Los Altos. They, we have not been able to find that application because according to Mr. Englander. And the people at the, at the planning office, they have not been able to find it because it was lost in this so-called digital transformation that took place. When COVID happened, but we have it on, we know. At a meeting that the owners, the two owners did not. Did not represent that there were CCRs on the property. We have covenants, conditions and restrictions that go all the way back. To the nineteen fifties for this tract. And it specifically, it specifically prohibits. The roof, the type of roof they put on there, which is a. A shiny white membrane roof, one of these ultra cool roofs that mostly is used. With commercial businesses.
Mr. Garibaldi, I'm going to apologize for interrupting you. Normally when we have input at meetings like this, we limit our speakers to three minutes. And I've let it go because I, I wanted you to have the, the freedom to talk about it. What I want to try and get from you, if you don't mind, because I, I think the, as you said. Councilmember Lee Eng is fairly familiar, and I think some of the rest of us are fairly familiar with some of the issues. Are the specific suggestions you would have for this committee to bring forward to the council? On how to improve transparency. And I think perhaps prior to your being able to get on the call, we did talk about. Looking at whether and how and to what extent both legally and then if we can do it legally practically. We would be placing notices in a neighborhood for single-family residential projects.
Yes.
Talking about.
What I was going, the bottom line, I know you probably don't want to hear all this. I've been through it with the planning department and Mr. Englander and everything. So. Yes, that's why I'm calling. I want to save. I wanted to save residents of Los Altos in the future, the problems that we had, which I believe all stemmed from the fact. That Los Altos does not require for building permits, any notification of the immediate neighbors when there's a single-story teardown. Only a double-story, only a multiple-story, a two-story. If we had been notified, we would have, I'm sure, discovered that they misrepresented about the CCRs. In fact, there were CCRs. We would have known about the project. We would have been able to give input, but because. No one knew about it until it was all signed and sealed by the city. It was too late.
Right.
And this should never happen. The city attorney needs to amend the ordinance. To provide for notification, not only of a two-story teardown, but a single-story. To provide for notification, not only of a two-story teardown, but a single-story teardown.
And I'm just gonna ask you to clarify, I think when you say a two-story teardown, what you mean is. A teardown to be replaced by a two-story house. And also notice for if a, if a house is torn down to be replaced by a single-story house.
Yes, that's what I mean.
Okay, I'm just trying to clarify, make sure I understood you.
Right, it's been a long day for me.
I understand, and, and babysitting little ones can take it out of you too, so. If that's, if that's all, and we've got your point, I wanna thank you for coming.
Uh, yes, and there's one other thing that the city didn't do besides. What they did do, which is lose a vital piece of evidence if we ever go to loss, to a lawsuit on this. What they didn't do was to. Note, well. When I, here's, here's what I wanna tell you. When we went to the planning department, we stressed upon them and we brought the CCRs with us. And we said, how did they mark this box? And, you know, no one could tell us, and as it turns out, the box that they supposedly didn't mark, that there were CCRs, that there were no CCRs in the property, that. That document cannot be found. But it seems incumbent on the city. I don't know. I, I just think that the city needs to notify the neighbors. CCR or not, you know, I. The person at the planning commission said, well, you know, it's a private matter. It's a private matter if there's CCRs. It's, it's, it's a private matter. So you're saying, so I, you know, we said to him, so what you're saying is the city doesn't care if there's CCRs. I said, why is it even on the application then? Oh, well, I don't know, you know, maybe the application needs to be revised. I said, no, the application doesn't need to be revised. What needs, what needs to take place is total notification. And so, you know. It was, it's been a bad situation. It's bad and bad for all the neighbors. I'm, I'm not the one that suffered the most. If you want us, if you wanna find out who has completely suffered over this thing. It's Joan Malfelder. Who is a, who's been a resident on our block since the early nineteen sixties. She's now around eighty years old. I, I need to, I need to tell you this, though. We, I've been through many sleepless hours. And I wanna get this off my chest with you, Mayor Inander. All of us have been through many sleepless hours. The city has not done anything for any of us on this block. Not only that. Going back to Ms. Malfelder, she is. They have built a huge, single-story. Property close to. With, with sliding windows and doors that overlooks her backyard. A total intrusion of property. We're trying to buy twenty-five-foot trees. To cover this ugly monstrosity that somehow went through design review. With a fellow that has moved to Monterey, whose name is Guido something or other. I don't, how he found this to be a conforming structure is beyond any of us. The person, Mr. Green, I forget his name at the planning commission. He said it was conforming. There's no way this thing is conforming. If you went and looked at it. Yourself, Anita, you would agree with me. Lynette knows it's non-conforming. She may not be willing to say that to your other council people, but the city has screwed us.
Mr. Garibaldi, I'm, I'm really sorry. I've appreciated hearing from you, but discussing the. Planning Department and our, the application of our planning code. Is outside the scope of what this committee is involved with.
Yeah, we have tried to get into a city council meeting and, and make our views known, and we've been unsuccessful so far.
Well, and I'm, and I'm sorry, but I'm going to have to stop you now, and thank you for coming.
All right, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you very much.
So, ma'am?
Yes.
Um, if you don't mind, when, after hearing a comment like that. I think section five needs to be relooked at. Because when we talk about index of city records. I think city records should apply to all departments too, and it's not the responsibility of the clerk shall be responsible for the maintenance of all city record index.
Yeah, I think that the question, the question is what constitutes a city record index? I think that's what we need to understand because. I'm not sure that.
Cause each department should be responsible for their own records, so. Yeah, so then if we.
So I don't, I don't know whether, and this, I just don't know, whether. The various application forms and documents and all those kinds of things that come into the planning department. Constitute a public record that is covered by this section. So I think that's the first question to ask.
And then we need to make sure and have that clarified, so that way we can make sure we clean this up.
Okay, so let me make a note here. Okay. Anything else that you can think of?
I think I, I think it covers everything I, and the notes, and you've captured the notes I've added, so.
Okay, then what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna put this together. And send queries to Julie for the things that were about Julie that we need information on. Queries to John Maginot and things that involve city clerk and copying. Mr. England because of the question on the, the burden and cost to staff of the policy. So that seems to be kind of the three, the three pieces that need action from outside before we. Report or with information so that we can report to council.
Okay.
That makes sense?
That, that's good for me. And then from there.
And obviously I'll copy you on, on all of those as well.
Okay.
Don't see anything else on my notes. So. There's nothing further.
Everything, that covers everything. I greatly appreciate it.
Okay, then we'll adjourn at five twenty-nine. And I'll thank our public members and other council member who attended for joining us this afternoon. And have a good weekend, everybody.
Thank you very much. Enjoy the weekend. Bye-bye.